I now call the August 12, 2014 work session of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Christensen lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Rich Guard?
Here.
Councilwoman Martin Canaan?
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen?
Present.
Councilwoman Jonathan Fabian?
Here.
Councilwoman Todd Smith?
Here.
Mayor Ron Wornness?
And I am present. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Larson from the meeting this evening?
I'd make a motion to excuse Councilman Larson.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I declare that we have a quorum this evening. At this time, we'll approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Been moved in second. It is their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, I guess agenda item number six, we have water treatment plant presentation by Ms. Hoffman. Get right to it, Millie.
Okay.
All right.
Well, good evening, Your Honor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity to address you this evening. I came into this kicking and screaming a little bit. When Dawn said you'd requested somebody from the water plant to come down and speak with you, I I kind of fought it a little bit and, but she was kind and Kyle was kind and they were sympathetic to my fears and then they kicked me off the ledge. So...
You're in the deep end of the pool, huh?
Yes, I am. So, just a little background on the plant. The plant was built and started being built in 1979 and it finished up in 1981. First operating season was in 1981. And I spoke with Dave Young about if he could remember anything in particular while the plant was being built. And all that he could really remember was that the city had saved up and paid cash for the plant. It was a $2.5 million project and they paid cash for it. And that Lynn Coleman was a huge proponent of the plant and she was very involved in its construction, so. We operate the water plant from May through September. September through April, we run strictly on wells. And so, as you can see from these photographs, it's a wonderful facility. It's not state of the art, but it certainly is a good facility and well taken care of by the operators at the plant. I'm just going to go through how the plant operates. It's considered a conventional filtration plant. And where it all starts is right here at the head gate. The head gate is on the Leclerc irrigation canal. And that water feeds underground to our pre-sedimentation pond. And there, the water travels through that pond. It's about an eight-hour detention time, so a lot of the solids get to settle out during that time. And so, as it travels through the pond, it goes underground again through some piping into our flock basin, which is the darker colored basins. There, there's chemical added. We add aluminum and potassium pernaginate. And what that does is it binds all the solids together in the water and allows them to fall out. And from there, it goes into our clarifiers and you can see quite a difference in the water between our flock laters and our clarifiers. It's an uplift clarifier where that water comes up through the blue tube settlers. And any of the solids that haven't settled out get stuck onto those tube settlers and then travels into the building. This is our filtration gallery where the water then gets filtered for anything left. And that includes viruses and that sort of thing. That all gets filtered out. And so, you can see where our filters are extremely clear there. And so, from there, it drops down into a clear well, a 40,000 gallon clear well underneath the filters. And then gets pumped up to the 2 million gallon tank behind the plant. These are the pumps. This is one of the pumps that you just voted to replace. They're 32 years old and they're definitely in need of replacement. Here's just a little sample of how we run our plant. This is called a SCADA system, which we're able to control flows. We're able to dose chemical. We're able to open and close valves. Turn on and off pumps. And so, this is where it all happens, on this screen. The other screens that are involved are screens to control our well field and some of our valves in town. And so, we just simply turn wells on and off during the winter when we need them. We're able to keep track of how much they're pumping and a total of how much they've pumped. So, I can present a production report every month and compare that to what was billed. Here's just a sample of our well field. Right now, it's divided into our airport zone, our upper zone, and our lower zone. And so, they're different pressure zones. So, with some of the new equipment that's been coming online, it's been getting progressively more difficult to control our pressure zones. We have to balance the water we're making to what we're putting out of each tank and what we're putting into each tank. So, it's becoming quite a monitoring issue for us. We've been able to keep up with it and learn as we go. But here again, we're getting new equipment online soon, so it'll be another learning curve for us. Here, we just have another screen that tells us about our communications. If we have good communication to a well site or not, if it's enabled, if it's had any failures, that sort of thing. And so, that's important information to us as the plant is now unmanned for five hours a night. We were able to do some SCADA upgrades this spring. And now, we're able to eliminate our midnight shift, which the guys were really grateful for. And so, that was quite a big deal for us. So, here is just a screen where we show how many hours each well has run and then a cumulative amount of how much we've pumped from each well. Okay. There's several different areas of the plant. The area that I'm showing you right now is our chemical storage area where we store our alum, our permanganate. And so, this is just, you know, just an area and it feeds at, the chemical feeds out of these tanks, the big tanks. So, one thing that we're really pretty proud of at the water plant is, and you may notice it through these photos or you may not, how well-kept the plant is. The guys are real committed to keep a clean facility, an orderly facility, and a safe facility. This is our electrical room. We kind of laugh every time we open the door because when the plant was built, they put all these pipes in the doorway. So, we kind of have to crawl through the pipes to get into the room. But that's where we keep our PLC to run our well field and all of our computer interfaces, that sort of thing, is all in that room. This is our blower room, which also houses our MCCs for our pumps. These MCCs are well beyond their service life as well. I have put that in the budget several times and I will continue to do so. They are really kind of getting on the dangerous side. I'm sure they were state of the art when they were put in, but now, anytime we even blow a fuse, I have to call an electrician. The fuses are sitting behind the wiring that's 440 volts and it's a dangerous situation. You know, if you slip or something, boy, you can really be in some trouble. So, we just call out the electrician. He's used to come in and changing out a fuse for us. He doesn't even charge us anymore, so. These big blue units on the right-hand side are our blowers. We use those during our backwash process. We blow a not hard PSI. It's a very low PSI but high volume. And it breaks up our filthy media so that we can clean it. Here's just a shot of our lab. We do some lab work every day. We check our pH. We check our hardness. We check our alkalinity, temperature, that sort of thing. And it gives us information on how we need to dose for the day. So, it's a, really, it's a pretty nice lab. And also, in the lab then are our control SCADA computers. And this is where the guys, you know, watch the system, make adjustments. And it's also where we eat our lunch and visit, so. Downstairs, there's a large pipe gallery. And it also houses a lot of our instrumentation. It tells us what's going on in our filters as far as turbidity and head loss, that sort of thing. And it really is some state of the art equipment down there, so. This picture, of course, we have a little bit of office space up there as well. This is where I usually do the EPA reporting and reports to senior staff, that type of thing. So, that's what happens there. We do a lot of different chores at the water plant. It's not just all about making water. It's about maintaining equipment. It's about maintaining buildings. It's about maintaining grounds. Our water plant sits on about two acres and most of that is grass. And so, it gets mowed twice a week, gets trimmed. The guys clean the plant. They change the light bulbs. They check the emergency systems. All of that is done by the operators. Every year, we get down in the filters. We steam clean everything. So, really, we are quite busy during the winter doing maintenance and that sort of thing, so. Here's just a shot. We, you know, we plow our own snow. And so, we definitely keep pretty busy. We also do some work in the field. We take care of several important valves in the system that control pressures. And usually for that, we collaborate with distribution. The guys work well together as a team and that's something to be proud of. There's never any issues when they ask for help. There's never any issues when we ask for help. There's never any issues. You'd be real, real proud of these fellows you got working here, so. Very often, we have training sessions at the plant. Sometimes, we have outside vendors come in to train us up on valve maintenance, that sort of thing. I try to do that as much as possible because our operators have to have a certain amount of continuing education hours to keep their licenses. And so, with that being said, we try to keep those costs down. So, I invite as many vendors in as we can so that we can get hours at home. We, right now, are working on a, on a collaboration with Rural Water to get a training session in here at City Hall and invite other communities in. And that'll be quite a savings. Here we are, just kind of training up on some Singer valves that we have installed down at the new booster station. It was a great training session. We really learned a lot there. I just kind of want to go through a little bit about what it takes to be an operator. These guys just don't show up for work. They have to go through a lot of training. They have to go through a lot of testing to get licenses to work at our water plant. You have to be at least a Level 2 operator because we have a Level 3 plant. And so, most of our operators go on to become Level 4 operators, not because they have to, but because they want to know everything that they can. And so, you know, they work hard and it's, those tests are not a breeze. They're very difficult tests. In fact, it took me three or four times to get my Level 4. And, you know, I'm not the dumbest tool in the shed, so it was quite a challenge for me to do that. I want to talk a little bit about projects that we've done that you've funded for us in the last few years. The first project that comes to mind was rebuilding our clarifiers and flockulators. I have some pictures here of why we needed to rebuild those. There is a lot of deposits and degradation in the beams that held everything together outside. And so, this is just a picture of that, erosion on those beams. Here's a picture of some of the old flockulators. You can see the corrosion on the shaft, around the bushings, and on the paddle wheels themselves. It was a situation where, you know, they were on the brink of falling apart. And so, you funded us and we got some work done up there. Here's the picture of the new flock drives. Everything's stainless steel, so it'll way outlast us, so we're pretty happy about that. We got new chains put in, new paddle wheels. And then, moving on to the clarifiers, which was the same project. You can see here where there's a lot of erosion on the sludge blades and that sort of thing where, you know, they were just ready to fall apart. Here's a picture of the beam that holds up the tube settlers. Just a real, not a good situation. And so, we got all of that repaired. And as you can see, there's the new tube settlers in the background. We also got new drives for our sludge blades and new gearboxes. And those were well overdue too. And, boy, they're just working great. We're happy to have them and they're just real good. Here's just a shot of the new sludge blades, all stainless steel. Again, will outlast us all, so that's a real, a real big plus. Last year, we redid the booster station, which was a huge undertaking. We had to learn how to run the whole system with no booster. We had to learn how to control all the pressures. It was a real experience and we figured it out as a team and really roasted the occasion. And I was real proud of the guys during that time. This is kind of a picture of the old valves that were down there in the booster. These valves were so old, they had leather bushings in them. And, I mean, they don't even make those anymore. And so, all of that was replaced along with our pumps and motors, our MCCs, and our PLCs. Here's just an example. The motor on the right is the older motor. And then, the motor on the left is the new unit. And, boy, they are just running like champs. The construction company that we had come in to do this work was just, they were amazing. Here's a picture of all the new valves that replaced those old leather bushing valves. They're new Singer valves and, boy, they just work real, real good. And we're real happy with them. And a picture of the new pumps and motors. The MCCs, the old MCCs that ran the motors and pumps were run on saltwater. And it was an electrolytic reaction that happened inside there that would run those pumps.
Millie?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. What is MCC?
Motor control, yeah.
Okay.
It's a motor control unit, so that just runs the pumps. And what happens is when the pressure drops in the lower zone, those pumps will come on automatically and keep the pressure at a certain level. So, if we have it set at 48, then those pumps will keep that pressure at 48. So, that, those are our new MCCs. And so, that was last year's big project. This year's big project, of course, is the new tank. We call it the JCC tank. The new JCC booster station and well 17. And so, this is just a picture of the new tank. Boy, we're almost done with that project and we're really looking forward to getting all that equipment online. It's been a long haul. And we're anxious to learn how to run all the new equipment. It's going to, again, be a challenge because we'll be able to move, something we've never been able to do, is move water from the plant uphill. So, we're pretty anxious to get all of that online. As you can see, we're maybe able to see there, right below this tank is a booster station where we'll be able to move water from that tank up the hill. So, we'll be able to supply the JCC and all of our airport zone customers. Here's a kind of a little better picture of the booster station. It's kind of built into the side of the hill. I have not even been inside this building yet and so I was a little bit out of the loop on this project. Monte spearheaded that for the city, who happens to be an ex-water operator, so you had the right man for the job for sure. Here is a picture of the new wellhouse. That's well 17. So, that'll be our 14th well coming online. And that will supply that new JCC tank. And we can also supply the JCC tank with water from our water treatment plant tank. This is a picture of the booster plant that they put in at the water treatment plant. And that's the plant that's going to allow us to push water up to the new JCC tank. Like I said, it's been quite a project and they've really torn up my lawn. And so, I'm not happy about that, but I'll get over it. It's going to be quite, quite a good thing for our customers and for the city, so. This is the inside of the new booster station at the water plant. And it's going to be a challenge to run and we're looking forward to that. We're looking at, I think, the second week in September to do a start-up on this new equipment and then to get some training in for us and then it's all ours. So, we're looking forward to that. And then, lastly, I kind of wanted to visit with you a little bit about the new high-service pumps that we're putting in at the water plant. Those pumps are, you know, over 30 years old and have gone down several times in the last few years. This last year, our biggest pump went down in August. And, boy, we've had to put WD-40 on things that we're supposed to move and duct tape on things that weren't supposed to move because it's been a challenge keeping them going. And we're real excited to get three new pumps up there with some VFDs, which are variable frequency controls, that will be able to more or less run the plant differently from there on in. We'll be able to run those motors down or back up and so, we'll be able to dose chemical more efficiently. If you can imagine owning a car that would only go 100 miles an hour or zero, that's what we deal with now. But we'll have every range in between once we get this new equipment in, which is pretty exciting for us. So, we'll get that all replaced and be running a pretty good plant next year, I think. So, with that, if you've got any questions for me, I'd certainly be happy to answer.
Thank you, Millie. That was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
It really is. And I don't think, I certainly can't tell you how proud I am of the work that you guys are doing. You're just doing amazing. And when I took office, why, that 2 million gallon water tank was a project that was getting started, you know, and whatnot. But they had blueprints and piles of paperwork and meeting after meeting. And the average person just doesn't have a clue what goes into to make something like that happen. And it just doesn't happen overnight. It's all come together.
Yeah, well, your credit goes to your operators. They, I mean, they work strange hours. They're there, you know. It's nice to have such a nice facility. The facility's got showers in there, so, you know, if we're on a 24-hour shift, we can go and take a shower, freshen up a little bit, wake up a little bit, and move forward. And so, the guys work really hard and they work well as a team. And I can't tell you how happy I am that I've got the crew I've got. Now, we're one crew member short. We lost Julian in June. And we put out feelers and did some interviews and we just, we didn't feel that anybody we interviewed was appropriate for the position. And we'll try again in October and see if we can't get somebody hired. Further than that, we've, every year, put in for a new, like a trainee position. Because our turnover has been, we've had quite a bit of turnover in the last few years. And there's a lot of reasons for that, but... But, um, uh, we'd like to have somebody in queue because it takes so much to train operators up and, um, get them to where they can operate the plant by themselves. So we'd sure, you know, like to have a trainee. I understand the, the limitations that we have budgetary, of course, and, um, but we're, you know, we're happy with the crew we have and, and, uh, so I, you ought to be real proud of those guys. They're-
We certainly are. Uh, I have some questions, but I think I'll open it up to the council and let them go first. And so, does any of the council members have any questions of-
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Christensen.
Millie, just a few questions. When you talked about killing the viruses and all that, is that done exclusively with chemicals or is, isn't there some lighting type of ultraviolet type of light?
Um, your honor, councilwoman, we, uh, we don't use ultraviolet. It's a, it's a whole different, uh, system of how to run a plant. Ours is conventional filtration, which means that in our floculators, when, when all those particles stick together and drop out, that's most of your viruses, your bacteria, that sort of thing. Then in the filters, it, it pulls out everything, most of everything that's left. And then we shoot it with sodium hypochlorite, which, uh, which kills everything else that's left.
And then, uh, another question. You said that, uh, it's unmanned for five hours now?
Yes.
Uh, I'm assuming you have some type of system where if something goes wrong, just to reassure everybody?
Right.
Something, uh, alarm system or beepers or whatever?
Right. Um, your honor, councilwoman, we, um, we have a wonderful call-out system. Uh, we purchased a iPad for Eric and then I use my own personal iPad. So when we get an alarm, it comes in on our telephone, we acknowledge the alarm. And then instead of having to get out of bed, get dressed and go up to the plant, we can now just turn our iPads on and see what's going on. And so if it's an issue where we have to go up to the plant, then we get dressed and go up. But, um, we have not had any call-outs at all since we put this system in place, which we're really encouraged about. And so, um, you know, we get our sleep at night and, and that's kinda nice and so, but yeah, it's a, it's, and, and then if it's a serious condition where we have a power bump or an outage, um, the plant shuts down automatically, notifies us that the plant has shut down and then we, we automatically go up there.
And then one other question. In, uh, I guess ergonomically speaking, do you have any, uh, when you show the training sessions, I, uh, do you have any other more formalized training? So, I mean, or is it typically done on the floor? I just wondered if you have area that could be provided to you that I think it'd be better to work on pumps when they're on the table or-
Right.
I don't know. I just, uh-
Yeah. Uh, your honor, councilwoman, we, um, we very often put heavier things that we have to see up on the counters.
Oh, okay.
Um, I get really picky about things and so I don't like my counter scratched up.
Well, I was just thinking-
So, we usually-
That pump looked like it weighed about 300 pounds.
It was, it was pretty heavy and so, um, but, uh, to answer your question, we, we manage.
Do you?
Yes.
I was just thinking it'd be nicer if they had a, a, a more formalized training type of area for-
Right. And, and, and the training, we're, we're kind of in a, in a state of flux with training. Training to go to our conferences is extremely expensive. So we've been trying to utilize, uh, web-based trainings, um, webinars, that type of thing. And like I said, get, uh, vendors in to train us, which the, uh, DQ will give us hours for. Um, but the main portion of our continuing education is still coming from conferences.
Okay. And one other question. PLC. What is, you were talking about the PLC.
Right. Your honor, councilwoman, that's programmable logic controller. And so basically it's just a computer's way of talking to the controller to control valves or pumps, that sort of thing.
Okay.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Cannon.
Ma'am, how many, how many total wells do you, do you operate?
Yes, um, your honor, councilman, um, we have 13 deep water wells right now online. And the 14th, which is that well 17 up on Airport Hill, coming online shortly. So 13 right now, but 14 shortly.
Now, have you had any problems with like the groundwater like we hear about up in the pavilion or are we, are we doing good?
Um, your honor, councilman, uh, we, uh, don't have the issues that Pavilion has, thank God. Um, in fact, we just spent $23,000 in water testing to show that we don't have any problems. And so we're very fortunate here. Um, you know, I, I feel bad for those folks in Pavilion because it's, it's not good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I would, I would be interested in, um, you mentioned you keep track of the production that you put out and then you're able to compare that against the billed amount. And is, I'd be interested to know what the difference is between how much we're producing and how much we're billing. And I presume that's a leakage that's going into the groundwater somewhere and it may not have anything to do with your side of the equation. Uh, it's more on the other side, but that just raises that question. I know we've been fighting that for a number of years. Uh, we've got a lot of, uh, pipes with holes in them. I remember Mr. Urbikite, uh, used to describe them as, uh, big soaker hoses underground. And, uh, so I, I don't know if, maybe that's something that's more appropriate for Stephen or, um-
Uh, uh, your honor, if I may, Stephen, um, every, every year I put out a report at the end of the year and, uh, you're not gonna be happy to hear that I believe the figure was 33% loss last year.
That's about the percentage that I've heard over the years.
Um, Dawn, Dawn is, uh, putting a wonderful program into place where we're gonna have leak detection done and a lot of, a lot of repairs done this year. So that's kind of exciting.
But that's something that we're really looking forward to. Uh, do we need more wells? Or do we have an adequate, I know with well 17 that was just drilled, uh, is that something that we need?
Your honor, we, um, I think with the new equipment online, I think we're gonna be good. Um, our upper zone has always been an issue because there's only three wells in our upper zone. And so at the end of water season and at the beginning of water season, we sometimes have a difficult time filling our 2 million gallon tank. Um, with that being said, I think with the new equipment, the way we'll be able to move water around in the system, that will no longer be an issue.
Great.
One, one issue we do have is down at Ryan Park where, you know, we have to water that park quite a bit. Joel does a great job keeping it up and, um, but I mean, he, he waters, he asks to water. And we lose a lot of water out of our west reservoir from that, from that perspective. And, um, I think we had talked about drilling a well down there the last couple of years and we, we kinda pushed it on the back burner. But that would be a huge help. Um, but, but you know, there again, we, we were able to keep up, we stay on top of things. So if we see water, uh, we, loss of water in the west reservoir, we fill it up in a timely manner so we, we don't run into trouble.
Okay. Uh, one other question that, um, historically has been a little bit of a concern. Do we still store the amount of chlorine that we used to?
Your honor, I'm, I, I guess I'm not sure what, uh, we used to have a, a big, I think, 2,000 gallon vat of it up there and we went to, uh, sodium hypochlorite.
Okay.
So that we don't have to store that amount of chlorine in the building. Now, we do store six chlorine cylinders for when we run out of chlorine at the well sites. And so those are six 100-pound cylinders.
Okay. I know that was always a concern. I think they were stored there on High School Hill at that booster station there. And, uh, that was something that stuck in my mind that if, if we ever had a problem, why it could wipe out the community. I remember Bill, but Bill liked to talk in superlatives at times anyway, so, uh, to make a point. But I just wondered if we were still storing that amount of chlorine.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, my experience, I don't know how much they really stored back then, but I would-
Not a concern.
I, I'm not concerned about it and, and, uh, so I'm, I'm pretty safety-minded.
And, and then I remember after nine 11, um, why we were going through a lot of security things. And that's when the security fence got put in and, you know, the one that raises and lowers and whatnot. And that was supposed to keep the bad guys out of our water supply and yet the whole backside of it is wide open, which never made any sense to me. But, um, are there security issues that you're concerned about or do you keep up with that or, uh?
But, your honor, the whole, uh, site is fenced in. Now, during this construction phase, of course, we've had some issues with fence being down and, and then we contact the contractor to have him put the fence back up and so we have had issues during construction. But normally, it's a totally fenced-in facility. Now, we do have, um, uh, a few, we have, we've had a few issues where people have climbed the fence, running away from the police or, or, you know, that type of thing. But, uh-
Want to go swimming or something?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not real concerned about anybody messing with the water system, right?
Good. Well, it's such a critical part of our community.
Absolutely.
And you do such a wonderful job. We're just very pleased with your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
And, um, I, I just don't know what else to say. You got a good crew?
Yeah, I do.
Really do. Thank you, Millie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number seven, sanitation task force report.
Your honor, councilwoman, councilman, I'd like to first echo, um, my respect and pride in Millie and the water treatment plant. You know, one of the nice things of being new in town, being new in this position, is really evaluating where, um, Riverton has its strengths. And what has made my job easier is knowing that I have staff that are very qualified, that take, um, a high amount of pride in the service they, they provide to the citizens here. And, uh, Millie is definitely one of those individuals, including her staff. So, um, I commend her and also thank her for her report. Moving on. Your honor, the reason staff thought it would be appropriate to bring up this, uh, task force recommendation this evening on a work session, uh, night rather than a business session, was to provide yourself and council the opportunity to really examine the options and the situation that we have with our sanitation services, um, understanding that the changes that are gonna be made will affect a number of our citizens. Staff felt that it would be wise to allow your honor and city council the opportunity to really examine, um, the pros and cons, a full analysis of, uh, of the recommendation that is being made. So that when we come to, to make a vote in a business session, um, you have the benefit of, of being informed and also having the opportunity to voice your concerns and the concerns of your constituents. That being said, I feel that it is appropriate, especially with those watching, um, via television, to possibly read a bit of this staff report. Obviously you are very versed with the situation at hand, but again, to, um, to respect those that are, that are watching in the audience and then also on, on television. I will read just shortly this, this report and then hope to open this, this discussion up to go over the pros and cons of each of the avenues the task force, um, explored and also to go over their recommendation. So, background. Following an efficiency study, the Fremont County Solid Waste Disposal District reduced their hours of operation at this, at the Riverton Baylor facility and Sandra landfill from seven days a week to five days a week, Tuesday through Saturday, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, beginning July 1st, 2014. Historically, the city of Riverton collected residential solid waste Monday through Friday and commercial solid waste Monday through Saturday. To respond to FCSWDD, that's kind of a mouthful, I think, from here on, I'll, I'll just say Fremont County if that's okay with you. So to respond to Fremont County's operational changes, the city must adjust its current service delivery schedule. Fremont County has granted the city a six-month grace period to appropriately adjust its services. On May 20th, 2014, the city council passed a motion to adjust the residential sanitation pickup to four days a week. However, to properly address community concerns, the city council reconsidered this motion on June 3rd, 2014 and voted against the four-day residential schedule in order to further explore the city's options. The city currently services 616 commercial accounts. Prior to July 1st, 2014, the majority of current commercial accounts were collected between, uh, one and five days a week. Less than 20 commercial accounts were collected six days a week. Since commercial pickup already incorporated Saturday service, the city adjusted its commercial service schedule on July 1st, 2014 to a five-day Tuesday through Saturday schedule. Commercial accounts previously accustomed to a six-day collection schedule, as a result, were reduced to a five-day collection schedule. Thus far, this change has been working. However, staff is available to assist on those historical six-day collection accounts where needed. For example, provide an extra container or even provide training on how to reduce their solid waste, um, production. Currently, the city has 3,631 residential accounts. 2,086 of these accounts are rollout receptacles. 1,545 are alley dumpsters. Members, excuse me, to address Fremont County's changes, residential, residential accounts will need to be collected on either a shifted five-day Tuesday through Saturday schedule or a shortened four-day Tuesday through Friday schedule. A sanitation task force was created to provide staff with additional perspective as they address the imposed Fremont County, um, changes. Members of the task force included Stephen Weaver, Greg, Greg Schwab, Don Wilhelm, Mia Harris, Bill McCumsey, and Councilwoman Christensen. These individuals represented operations personnel, billing personnel, varying levels of management, and elected representatives. In responding to the Fremont County changes, the task force explored the following options with staff. First, an eight-hour shortened day schedule, Tuesday through Friday. An eight-hour shifted five-day schedule, Tuesday through Saturday. A 10-hour shortened four-day schedule, Tuesday through Friday. And privatization of sanitation services. We will go into the details of each one of those options shortly. The sanitation task force recommends the city adjust its sanitation service delivery to an eight-hour shortened four-day schedule. This, um, schedule includes eliminating exist, excuse me, eliminating existing residential alley dumpsters and replacing them with rollout receptacles. Residential alley collection of, of rollout receptacles will be allowed except where utility and liability conflicts require, uh, curbside placement. These locations have been detailed and we'll go over those locations shortly. Responding to the county's, um, provides the city a unique opportunity to create efficiency in its sanitation services. I think either way we look at it, we've gotta become more efficient. With the reduction of days, we can take our, our trash to the Baylor. So either way, we're gonna be more efficient, however you guys vote. Um, currently, the city, the city is underutilizing its new sanitation trucks expressly equipped for rollout pickup. These trucks collect and deliver solid waste to the Baylor facility at a faster rate than the city's older sanitation trucks, which collect both rollout and dumpster receptacles. Furthermore, if the city moves to an eight-hour shortened four-day Tuesday through Friday schedule, sanitation staff will be able to supplement additional public work operations each Monday. They won't be driving trucks and collecting, um, solid waste. Lastly, before we open up this discussion, um, in talking about budget impacts, currently, um, all budget impacts are not easily forecasted. However, we do know that there will be a one-time capital investment of approximately 75,000 to 100,000, um, to purchase new rollout receptacles should the vote go that way. The city has currently budgeted 80,000 for this capital investment. Okay. So if we can kinda go through this, again- kind of go through this, again, the sanitation task force, and I commend each one of them, for their diligence in examining this, this situation that we have in, in collecting our solid waste. And, um, you know, up here on the overhead, should be similar to what you have. But let's kind of just work through it and go through these options. And please feel free to halt, um, and ask me questions at any time and I'll do my best to answer them. To consider the shortened four-day Tuesday through Friday eight-hour schedule, a few considerations should be made. First of all, um, again, all single-family and duplex residential accounts will convert to rollouts. Understanding that there was a, a lot of citizen concern about keeping sanitation services in the alleyways, the task force, uh, realized that it would be possible to allow rollout pickup in the alleyways for the majority of the city. Unfortunately, we couldn't do that for the entire city, um, primarily because overhanging power lines, utility conflicts. I call them pinch points, but short corners for a big sanitation trucks to make a turn. And, um, empty those, those receptacles caused problems and so. Staff has examined the city and proposed areas where, um, alley rollout pickup will be provided. And then other areas where unfortunately it won't be feasible. Um, again, sanitation employees on this schedule will be able to supplement other public works operations each Monday, which I think is a benefit because, um, you know, we can put them towards patching potholes. We can put them towards weeding, painting crosswalks, et cetera. Obviously, I'm going to promote and say we need as much staff as possible. And we, we do the best with what we have, but to create an efficiency where we'll have extra employees on each Monday to supplement public work services is a benefit to the city. Another point of interest and to, to respond to citizen concern, to help populations that are aged or populations that have certain disabilities, the task force examined providing a special assistance program wherein those who, who have dis, difficulties, um, rolling their rollouts to either the alley or to the curbside placement could receive assistance. There are many municipalities who offer programs like this, which usually operate as, as such, um, if a person with a disability, say for example, a person in a wheel, wheelchair, is in a, you know, he, obviously that person would not be able to roll out their receptacle. Um, they're able to contact the city. The sanitation foreman would go and meet with them, verify the need and concern, and then, um, put them on a list to provide special assistance where the driver would stop on his route, walk to the, uh, the property, pull the roller out, bring it to the curbside, empty it and then roll it back for that resident. So we do want to definitely, um, respond to that concern that the citizenry has. And again, we will be able to use the, the newer sanitation trucks for the majority of these pickups since they are more efficient with rollout pickup. All that said, we looked at a couple disadvantages and, and advantages with this option. To work through them quickly, because I definitely don't want to take too much of your time, so we can move on to the other options as well. There is a time efficiency and truck efficiency when we look at this option. The sanitation trucks that pick up the rollouts to new ones have a larger capacity and also, um, a better compactor. As such, they're able to collect trash, um, and store it longer and go to the dump one time a day, or excuse me, the baler one time a day. Whereas the older trucks, unfortunately, um, they're not as efficient and three to four trips a day are made. So those three to four trips add up in time and gas, et cetera. Whereas with the newer ones, we can just keep going and dump once a day. Our dumpster inventory is getting out of date and we will need to make a capital investment one way or the other, whether we invest in, in new alley dumpsters, three-yard dumpsters, or in the rollouts. Eventually, those, those capital investments are coming. The costs to replace rollouts are cheaper than the alley dumpsters. And there's also a benefit for citizens in, in, and being able to choose their receptacle size, whether it be ninety or forty-five gallons. And there's a, um, a cost schedule associated with that with the size. Disadvantages. Obviously, the upfront cost, cost to purchase the rollouts is a big one. There's, uh, an inability to dump large items in the receptacles where persons with alley dumpsters are, I think, are used to being able to dump some larger items. Again, there's a just, uh, difficulty for the elderly and the disabled. Might be left on the roadway. And again, as, as we've all heard, there is some citizen preference to keep the alley dumpsters and, and not change to the rollouts. Um, and there's also an issue of, of those rollouts blowing over in some areas when high winds, winds affect. The lower portion, um, addresses the, the examination that staff and the task force looked at. Providing both street and alley pickup and just strictly pickup on the, on the streets, curbside. I think you can each go through those unless you have questions. And again, we're limited in some areas on providing alley and curbside pickup. Just an example of some of the overhead, um, problems that we have, working through the alleyways. So, we have overhanging lines. This is a picture of an alleyway where, as the alley dumpsters are, are stationed right now, they're stationed in, in a location where trucks can come and safely empty the receptacle. However, if, if more rollouts are put along the alleyway, those pinch points and, um, liability hazards are more often and more frequent. And so that was something to consider when we looked at, um, alleyway pickup. Here's an example of tight corner. Another one where a truck actually scraped against a fence pole and it's right next to a guide, a guy water, excuse me, and utility box. So those are things to consider when we, um, put together our service map, our proposed service map. As you see above, and I'm going to get in the way, obviously. This map represents, um, the proposal for rollout on this schedule. Highlighted in yellow are, are commercial accounts. Highlighted in purple are the existing rollouts, um, throughout the city. In blue are the proposed rollouts that would require curbside pickup where we couldn't put them in the alley. And lastly, in orange, the new rollouts that would be allowed in the alleyways. So there are different sections of the population that would not be able to have their alleyways, um, incorporated in that rollout pickup. Before we move on, are there any questions? I feel like I'm getting fairly dry, your honor. A dry topic.
Do anyone have any questions at this point?
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
The only question that, uh, came to me from a citizen was, in some of these areas, if the rollout went to the same spot where the dumpster currently is, would they be able to maintain alley access or is it just not at all feasible?
I think that brings up a good point. And that might be something, excuse me, something to consider. I think it obviously would be a case by case, um, basis, your honor and councilman. That would be something that staff could look at. Because if we could consolidate those areas and, and request that those citizens roll their rollouts a little bit further down the, the alley, you know, they may have to move three or four properties, place them there. And that's something to consider. Tight curbs, or excuse me, tight corners, um, would still be a problem, but we could maybe work around it since obviously sanitation trucks are accessing a lot of the alleys now. Um, I know staff has been concerned that some of the alleys require, um, front access and then they actually have to back out whereas in some of those streets, it's, it's not too safe. There was one example brought to my attention where, the sanitation truck driver actually goes front, frontways down the alleyway and then has to back out onto Main Street. And, uh, I commend him for, for doing that without having any safety or, or liability accidents at this time, but that's something I would hope to eliminate for, for future liabilities.
Yeah, I, I just know that a few of these properties, um, particularly North Fourteenth East, North Fifteenth East, North Sixteenth East, the ability to get a rollout to the front is pretty dicey just because of the way they're built.
Yeah, and I think I probably didn't cover that well enough on the disadvantages. And I think I'm a hundred percent accurate. A lot of, uh, the neighborhoods and, and some of the older parts of town where construction occurred, um, decades ago. Unfortunately, some of those don't have driveways, some of them don't have walkways from the, from the house towards the curbside where you'd have to basically roll those rollouts over the grass. And in the winter it'd be over snow, um, when it snows, so that's a definite concern. And that's where we tried to allow the alley pickup to kind of eliminate some of those conflicts, but, I think that would be a possible solution. You know, for example, on cul-de-sacs, it's fairly common to stack all your rollouts together so the truck can come in and pivot around, so there is precedence for putting rollouts together.
Thank you.
Thank you, your honor. Thank you, councilman. So the other option, your honor, is a shifted five-day Tuesday through Saturday eight-hour schedule. Brief points, uh, residence, excuse me, residential accounts continue as is, alley dumpsters remain in use. There are staffing impacts that will need to be addressed for the Saturday schedule. And again, the older sanitation trucks will provide the majority of service pickup for this option. Let's talk some advantages. There is a continuity in the type of service and I think that's, that's a plus that a number of, um, concerned citizens have is they like to keep things the way they are. There is a larger capacity for those, uh, three-yard alley receptacles. The inventory is existing. Preference to the citizen and, uh, there's a centralized location of the receptacle. Disadvantages, again, we've already talked about the time and truck efficiency, where there's a smaller capacity, a weaker compaction rate and more trips to the baler each day. There is a problem of, of free riders and illegal dumping, and illegal dumping, excuse me, going on right now with some of our alley dumpsters where persons who aren't even paying for the service are, are driving the alleys and dumping. There is an older inventory, again, like I said, that we will need to start addressing. We have great staff that spend time in, you know, in their off time to weld and retrofit some of the alley dumpsters that are struggling. And they do a good job of keeping people in service. Another disadvantage that was brought up was residents have to share their dumpster space and share the smells of the dumpster. They have to walk their garbage bags to the dumpster, which could be, again, a couple of property lines. And they, since they're larger, they attract flies, bugs and rodents. We did examine, um, so, excuse me, that was an overall, um, dumpster analysis. A couple other things to examine on this five-day Tuesday through Saturday pickup. Again, it's similar to the status quo, which is a, an advantage, continuity and service history. Talking about staffing impacts, um, we're going to do our best to accommodate this change where we have to collect more trash in a shortened amount of time with the staff we currently have. And we're hoping to be able to do so, but it, it's possible we'd have to hire new sanitation drivers. Fortunately, we have the capital equipment as far as trucks go, I think, to, um, put another driver behind the seat and get more, um, pickup each day. But we would, we would have to examine that. We do our best to keep our staffing levels as they are, but it's possible we'd have to hire another individual. Covering time off and overtime, um, well, getting overtime and covering time off would be something we'd have to consider. Um, a mechanic schedule, we'd have to employ a mechanic on Saturdays or have them on call in case we had any breakdowns. Supervisor, we'd have to have the supervisor, um, work out a schedule where he would either work a Tuesday through Saturday shift or keep his regular Monday through Friday and then be on call or have to come in and spot check on, on Saturdays. Because again, um, you know, we want to make sure that we're efficient and our current supervisor is not just over sanitation, he's also over streets and alleys and, uh, parks and weed and pests. And it goes down to the foreman, obviously, so we would have to address, um, his schedule. Saturday traffic, this was a point the, um, that was brought up on the task force. The baler is more crowded on Saturdays, um, so unload times are longer. There's a safety concern. You have more citizens wanting to, to empty their, their solid waste at the baler each Saturday and now we're going to be providing an influx of large, um, sanitation trucks. And so there's a safety concern, there's a time concern as far as, uh, Saturday baler traffic. Those are the advantages and disadvantages for, for this, um, delivery option. Do you have any questions before we move on, your honor?
Do you have any questions?
Okay, we're gonna keep.
You're not. You're doing wonderful. Charge on.
Thank you. The last two options that were examined, um, were a four-day, ten-hour schedule, uh, Tuesday, excuse, excuse me, Tuesday through Friday. Couple points, residential accounts continue as is, um, alley dumpsters remain in use. On this schedule, uh, we'd have to, it would involve a bit more management, um, supervision, just to ensure that the efficiency is gained in adding two hours to your day. So, you know, we're used to eight hours days and adding a couple hours, I think there is a possibility to gain efficiency because in those four days you're adding the eight hours. However, we want to make sure that management, um, ensures that that efficiency is gained throughout those, the day and, um, there are opportunities not to, to miss on that opportunity to be more efficient. Another issue to consider is pickup must be completed before five PM because either way we look at it, the baler's open from eight to five. And so we'd have to be in again by five o'clock, so that means our ten-hour day is going to start earlier in the day, especially if we're going to provide the adequate breaks and lunches that are necessary by law. So, to provide a, a one-hour lunch break, pickup must begin by six AM. To work through some of the advantages and disadvantages, um, and advantages, employees get a three-day weekend every week, so that's a, a benefit for the employees. Avoid Saturday traffic at the baler that we just talked about. And another advantage that's not on here is, um, again, we're able to maintain the status quo of, uh, some citizen preference. Disadvantages, again, there are staffing impacts on the four-ten schedule. Scheduling vacation and sick time and covering those would be more difficult because you have four days, you get one off, you have a, a smaller pool to pool from, from staff to try and cover that, so. It's possible. I mean, it's doable, we just take coordination. Again, employee focus and efficiency, we just want to make sure that management ensures that efficiency is gained in the longer days. And lastly, with this baler hour restriction from eight to five, um, starting earlier in the day, some residents would have to put their rollouts out or have their trash ready to go, you know, by six AM, which could or could not be a problem. And another one is, uh, early AM noise. You know, you get a truck coming down an alleyway and you hear this boom, boom, and then boom, boom, early in the morning, so. Could be a wake-up call for people if they, you know, push the news on their alarm too much. So maybe that's a benefit, I don't know, but it's something to consider. And we'll just do this next one at the same time. Moving on to the privatized, excuse me, privatization of sanitation services. To really understand this option, further analysis will, will be required. There are a number of things to look at and negotiations that would have to go on, specifically over franchise agreements, contracts, fees, costs, and then, uh, even the services that would be provided. So without knowing those variables, it's hard to provide a full analysis or even do a, a simple advantages disadvantages analysis. That being said, Waste Management Incorporated has already expressed interest in providing services to the city. So if this is something the council would like to explore, your honor would like to explore, we can examine that further. Advantages. The citizens may opt in or opt out of this program. If for some reason a citizen does not create solid waste, they could opt out. Possible franchise fees is a benefit. And there's a business-like approach to service delivery, um, which could be an advantage, could be a disadvantage, but it's, it's worth noting. Disadvantages, um, the lead time to implement. Again, there's a lot of coordination that would have to go on in order to, to really examine this. There's a question on whether our yard waste and recycle programs would be able to continue. We would lose our control of rate adjustments each year. Unless that was negotiated in the contract, a lot of times that control would turn over to the private entity providing the service. And there's only one private service provider currently able to provide those services and so it would be difficult to solicit several bids and compare them. We would, um, take the one option that, that's at hand. And lastly, which, which might be the biggest is there would be a required staff reduction. And lastly, which might be the biggest, is there would be a required staff reduction, and we could not justify the staff we have if we started privatizing our services, so that's another thing to consider. That's a quick run-through of the options that the task force and staff examined. I hope that was not too dry, I hope it was beneficial to each one of you, and I would be pleased to hear any questions, comments, citizen concerns at this time, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Does any of the councilmen have questions, Mr. Butterfield? Yes?
Sir, I guess just one comment on the disadvantaged side of your privatization, way I can pronounce it. Again, not only the staff reduction, but I'm thinking also the capital investment that the city's already made, like you said, in the new equipment, unless, unless, you know, somebody could think that they would, you know, that the private company would, you know, buy that equipment and take those vehicles off our hands, otherwise the city of Riverton's gonna own X amount of millions of dollars of equipment that we're gonna park someplace.
Your Honor, Councilman, that's a good point to bring up, and again, that would all be in negotiations, whether the private company could absorb our equipment and reimburse us, if, you know, if not, we would have to try and sell it on the market ourselves.
Your Honor? Yes, Councilman Gard. Kyle, what do you think the staff reduction would be? How many positions? Any idea?
Your Honor, Councilman, currently, there are six sanitation employees. There are four dedicated to recycling, and I believe two dedicated to yard waste. Streets and alley, I need to write this down, excuse me.
Ten, is what we're talking.
Streets and alleys currently has, well, streets and alleys and sanitation, I should combine that, have a total of seventeen employees right now, and ten of which are either dedicated to sanitation, yard waste, or recycle. We could, as it stands right now, I think our staff are very good at cross-training, supplementing the operations of the city when needed. To give you a hard and fast answer, Your Honor and Councilman, I couldn't say exactly how many we would have to lose. I would love to keep them all on, personally, but that would be a reality. At least, I think it would be fair to say the ones dedicated just to sanitation would be probably a fair guess, but again, it would be tough to say.
Follow-up question, how many pieces of equipment, how many trucks, how many trash trucks do we currently have?
Your Honor, Councilman, we currently have seven total sanitation trucks, two of which are the new efficient rollout trucks, the other five are the older dumpster sanitation rollout combos. Currently, we have one that has been down at the mechanic shop for over a month now, coming up on two months, so we have six total trucks that we are able to operate at this time. Use one full-time new sanitation truck for residential rollout pickup, the other is used for yard waste pickup during the summertime. The others are obviously used for senate, or, excuse me, for commercial accounts, and then also the residential accounts, which would be both the rollout and the alley pickups.
Have you given any further, as I go to the map, the blue stands out to me, and those are proposed pickups that are gonna be in the street.
Correct. Correct.
And have you given any thought to picking up all of the orange is a great idea, that stuff remains in the alley? Have you given any idea to picking up all the orange but leaving the blue in dumpsters?
Your Honor, Councilman, we haven't fleshed that out too far, but that's an option we can definitely consider this week prior to next week's vote.
What that would do is it would keep dumpsters off the streets, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, that's really not true, because in my section of town, our dumpsters are on the street, and so I just was wondering, in those highly congested areas that are kind of smaller, frontages, like Fifteenth, Sixteenth Street, if we have a lot of parked cars, problems picking up those cans anyway. Would it be hard to give us an idea of how many dumpsters would remain in residential use if we didn't, if we left the dumpsters in the blue areas?
Your Honor, Councilman, I'd be happy to work with staff and come up with an estimate on that and get it to you within the week.
Thank you.
Your Honor, right, believe most of the areas in the blue, now some of them are not, are mainly because of the corners, the ninety-degree turns is the reason why they wanted to move them to the front, because we have accidents that occur and people backing into things, and we have claims that are constantly coming through because of those ninety-degree turns, where it goes straight up and turns left or right. Now, some of those are not that way, but some of them are.
Your Honor?
Yeah, Councilman Christensen.
In the meetings they talked about, they had, Don had the great pictures of some of the guy wires, the fences, the phone boxes that have been injured in the, so that was a concern.
Roots torn off, and sides of garages hit.
Yeah, that was one of the pictures about the blue areas. Again, not all of them would be, but, I don't know.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian?
Has any consideration been given to looking at the large commercial rollouts? I know cities that have nothing but rollouts, even for the big accounts.
Your Honor, Councilman, I'm not aware at this time if that has been explored. I'd be happy to work with the sanitation task force and with staff that have a further history on this issue and find out.
Just wonder if it could give even more efficiency, maybe, to the process.
Your Honor, I know generally the ninety-gallon is fairly common.
Any other comments?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Christensen.
I did wanna mention on the shortened four-day, the eight-hour schedule, one of the disadvantages is large items, and after riding with the rollout drivers, I will say that there is a lot of large items that are in the rollouts, the ninety, or ninety-gallon. They, it's amazing to me what fits in there. We went around a few neighborhoods, and so they do accommodate fairly good-sized items. I heard there are some regulations about the lid having to be closed, now, a lot of those situations, they were not closed, but I don't know if it's a disadvantage, you can fit a lot. Lot, pretty amazing.
That's correct, and in general, residential accounts for solid waste really should be only focused on solid waste that's generated from the residents. Those large items typically require to be dumped elsewhere. There are several laws about items that can and cannot be dumped for residential containers. Sometimes, again, having the large alley dumpsters do allow individuals to kind of skirt some of those regulations and put them in any way.
Your Honor, I didn't mean to say that they could put anything in them, but they do accommodate quite a large item, but the city of Riverton has that tagging system that is, it's a saving grace, I mean, people aren't using it to the, to what we should be using. You purchase a tag, and you can have the city come pick up anything, it doesn't matter how, what size it is, and it's such a bargain for the taxpayers to use that, and it's through the, I think we can order it through the city hall and Public Works. All the people have to do is call or come down and pay their small amount, it's just determined on the size of the item, but mattresses, I mean, anything, large, large items can be picked up for a very small amount, so people need to use that a little bit more.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to comment that you've opened so many questions in my mind and so much, you know, that, one question is, I would be interested in if we have any idea of what the cost of our garbage collection system is versus the income that we're receiving from customers. I mean, does it pay fifty percent, seventy-five percent, twenty percent? Is there any estimate on that? So if we did go away to privatization entirely, would there be a savings or a loss?
Your Honor, Courtney said she could have that to you by tomorrow.
Okay. That just kind of comes to mind, that would be, you know, I could just think of, if the city of Riverton wants to be in the garbage collection business, you know, and I think it's the best thing to do for our citizens personally, but if we're not going, if we're looking at doing everything that I see along here is mainly for the city's efficiency, the city's, you know, then, and we're not doing it for the citizens, then maybe we need to get out of the business, is the way that I would wanna look at it. I was really pleased to hear you suggest that our drivers would be willing to go to a home and help someone with their rollout if they weren't physically able to do it. Having worked with a handicap for twenty-eight years, I'm very sensitive to the whole idea of eligibility certification, okay? And let me tell you, that is not an easy area, once you get into it, who's eligible for this service and who is not, and how abused it would be if I call you up and say, "I can't get my rollout, you know, out because I've got a bad back." How are you going to certify that that is in fact the case, or are we just going to say, "Not a problem, we'll have our drivers take care of it for you"? And so it's, you know, it's going down a road that I can just see a plethora of questions and whatnot. So, another thing, the task force that has been put together, the way that I'm looking at it, are all city employees, including Councilman Christensen, and I would really strongly like to suggest that we, it would be nice to have a couple citizens on there that are going to have to deal with these issues. I've received more calls and more concerns from citizens over this issue than any other issue, including chickens, that we've had to work with, and so I just think that it wouldn't be inappropriate to have a couple citizens on there, on that, you know, to give their side of the equation their concern as well, so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Having had opportunity to live in areas where waste management or an equivalent company was the only opportunity to get your garbage collected, I can point out that trying to have a dumpster in that scenario is definitely cost prohibitive for a single home. I mean, if you can't get most of the people on your block to go in with you on it, you're not gonna have a dumpster, I can promise that. So, a move to privatization is a move, in my opinion, to rollouts, and I'm not sure that the average citizen would be all that interested in moving to privatization, knowing that they're going to get a rollout either way versus what's being proposed.
Yes, and I'm not advocating privatization at all, I'm just laying it out, you know, what's our responsibility as a city to our citizens, and so, that's the point, and I don't disagree at all with what you're saying. Lander does not have waste management over there, their waste management does take care of all of their garbage, and they don't have these kind of discussions in their city council. They just have backed out of it entirely, and so, my daughter lives over there, and I'm very familiar with that, but at any rate, there's...
Your Honor?
Yes.
Is, Councilman Gard? Would you infer that they don't do as good a job picking up trash, or do they do as good a job if it's private?
It puts the responsibility on the citizens a lot more. I think that the privatization, once it gets in place, you know, as we've indicated in here, we have no control over the pricing of it, to protect the citizens from that, and the way it is now, I think that the city may be helping absorb some of the costs for our citizens, because we are trying to be sensitive to what's in the best interest of our citizens, you know, rather than just looking at it as an economic model, and what's the most cost-effective, and yada, 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 and so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Does anyone know what they pay in Lander to get your trash picked up?
Your Honor, I think Don had sent it to us, and it's actually higher than what our rates are right now. I guess the biggest issue for me is right now, they don't do any sort of recycling or green waste, so if you were to look at that option, we would have to provide that service or you'd have to cut it completely, and that would be a, particularly the green waste, I think, would be harder for citizens to not want, because that's just a service we add on to our rate, and Lander, they just pick up trash, the recycling's done separately.
Yes.
And where do they pick it up? Do they pick it up in the alleys, in?
I believe they do that.
In rollouts, is that the only choice? Can you help us?
It's where they tell you to put your container, and it depends, that's exactly where they tell you to put it.
Your Honor, councilmembers, in Lander, they've gotten all, away from all alley pickups, it has to go out on this street, curbside.
And it's rollouts per house?
Rollouts only, yes.
Okay, thank you. Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard?
As I look at the numbers, we have 2,086 rollouts in the city, and there's 1,545 dumpsters, and as I look at the map, the orange, the proposed orange area is substantial, in my opinion, compared to the blue, and in this map, it puts everybody into, every residential customer into a rollout, correct?
Correct, Your Honor and Councilman. Just to clarify, those are accounts and not actual dumpsters. I could get an account of the exact number of actual yard dumpsters we have, but those numbers represent the accounts, and if you estimate, there are typically three to four accounts per three-yard dumpster.
Oh, okay.
So, that doesn't quite represent the number of actual dumpsters.
So, this really, this 1,545 is actual dumpsters, and we have, we could have as many as three residents in each dumpster?
No, that's accounts.
That's accounts.
It's accounts, just the other way around.
So divide that by three or four.
So, we could actually have a third of the dumpsters that we're talking about, correct? Instead of fifteen, we could have, yeah.
Your Honor, Councilman, I think it would be safe to estimate there's around 500, you know, just follow that math.
Okay. And I guess from, just looking at the color, I mean, the pink really jumps out of existing units, and then the orange is next, and there isn't a lot of blue there, so I just think it would be interesting if we could keep the congestion down in certain areas, I think those, that Sixteenth Street is already really congested by the size of its streets, and if you blow that up and take a look at that, you can, I don't know how many dumpsters we're talking about leaving in place, it might be even more economical for us to step into this a little bit easier, instead of replacing all those dumpsters, take our very best dumpsters and move them into the blue area, take out the bad dumpsters that are in poor shape, and then see how that worked for a year, and then if that is not working, then take the blue onto dumpsters rollout, instead of dumpsters, take them on to rollouts, we wouldn't have to buy all the rollouts, eighty thousand dollars for the rollouts this year. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. As I recall, we were offering for citizens to take a rollout versus the dumpster in the alley, is that not correct?
Your Honor, are you talking about, right now, your only option, if you have a dumpster alley, is a dumpster alley, you don't have an option of a rollout?
It was my understanding that if you could get your neighbors...
Your Honor, are you talking about, right now, your only option, if you have a dumpster alley, is a dumpster alley? You don't have an option of a rollout?
It was my understanding that if you could get your neighbors together, if you could get your four neighbors, that then you, and you could save something like five bucks a month or something, or?
Your Honor, I believe they'd have to get the whole block, otherwise we'd have the inefficiency of going through and picking up one, and then the truck would have to come by and pick up the dumpsters.
I knew that there was something in there that we were working on. The other thing, one of the advantages or disadvantages is the theft of services. That the feeling is that there's a lot of people that, from out in the county, that come in and dump their garbage and whatnot. We'd still have that, it would seem to me like, if we've got the commercial dumpsters. So I'm not sure how that's, you know, can be used as an argument, as a disadvantage, if we're still going to have that possibility. I agree that if you have a large 90 gallon and you put a television in it, then that should go in e-waste, and you immediately know whose it is. If you just take your TV now and dump it in the dumpster in the alley, nobody knows whose it is, so they pick it up and then sort it out when it gets down to the station. So there's a certain amount of accountability that's good. I think, you know, each of us should be accountable for what we put in there, but I don't know, it's just, there's so many questions that are raised in this, but I don't know. I don't know where it's going to drink out, so.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
Do you have a feel for, I mean, we're talking about an $80,000 to $100,000 outlay of capital. Do you have a feel for what efficiency gains, you know, how that might be repaid due to the fact that we're working a four day week?
Your Honor, councilman, that's tough to project in my head right now. I think that's something you could try and calculate. Doing so right now on the spot, I think, would be difficult and be accurate. There's obviously, I think, something to consider in the sense that the city needs to make capital investments along the way anyway, whether we do 100% rollouts or alley dumpsters. That upfront capital investment is obviously something that we would want to gain in efficiency. And I think, and again, I can only give you soft answers right now without looking at that, but as Public Works Director, who is concerned with all realms of public works, I think the efficiency we gain from supplementing other services each Monday and being able to put more employee resources towards, you know, responding to citizen concerns and work orders, getting people on the crack seal equipment, because as it stands right now, I know staff has a hard time getting out and manning some of that equipment because it pulls so many resources away from regular scheduled maintenance. And so we would be able to supplement that each Monday with newer, well, not new, excuse me, additional employees. And again, I think that's going down an alley that probably doesn't really answer your question, but there are definite efficiencies, I think, but to really calculate that, I'm sorry, I couldn't give you that at this time.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Gard.
I don't see any savings to the fact that we're still going to keep those guys working five days a week. Still going to pay them for five days a week. We may get other services addressed, which is a good point, not all trash pickup, but we're not going to pick up, we're not going to save money because we don't have anybody working on those days. So, you know, it appears to me to be that tonight I'll go home and it'll be Tuesday night, so when I get home from council, it's put the trash out at night before I can get in the house. And so I will have to, I will have to wheel it out to the curbside, and I don't remember anybody from the city doing that for me ever. And so, you know, I don't know that it's such a terrible thing to have a rollout. You know, it's a part of life and has to be done. I was just trying to think of the congestion of already congested areas of town. And, you know, if we could minimize that, at least for a while, and see if that really does help. We've been picking up that trash in those blue areas in the alleys for a long time. And there isn't that many of them. I'd like to know the count on how many households are in the blue. And if you can get that to me, I'd like to know that. And then the only reason that I, those areas jump out at me, and all the blue areas aren't that way, but let's just take College View Drive there, right next to our high school. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven containers that are going to be out in the street. It's a busy street. It's a big street. It's one of our bigger streets, but it is also one of our arteries. And so, you know, I don't think, I really don't think, I think the mayor is correct that nobody's, the dumping from out of town into commercial dumpsters is going to continue in that yellow area. There's no way to stop that, that I can see, unless they just all go away, and I don't know that that's going to happen. But then if, if some of these other areas, you know, down in Mary Anne, most of Mary Anne, a good proportion of Mary Anne can stay in, in the alley, but where we come into that blue area, if we've got good equipment, if there is some dumpsters that are still very usable, you know, let's move them to there and adjust that, see how it flows for a while. We'll buy less rollouts by that number of houses, and it'll give us an ability to step into it instead of just go without. So that would be my suggestion. And I think the equipment's there. If we privatize, those brand new pieces of equipment have value. They go right on the market and be sold. I don't necessarily like that idea, although it's, works in Lander. I don't know why I don't like that idea. I think that it's kind of nice to know your trash guy. We wave at each other, and I've been on that six o'clock route. It's not that bad. Get your trash out there. That's why I had to put it out tonight, because he comes early on Wednesday morning. And so I think you adapt to those things. The privatizing of that market would be interesting to actually see what it costs. I realize that the individual would pay more, but we would have less draw on our, on our budget for all those items that we, I believe, what did we pay for our last, our latest dump truck was trash truck 230 something? More than that? Was it more than that?
Three.
280?
280 or something.
Three something. And so, you know, there, there's good reason, when you look across and see that other communities are doing it, there's, there's good reason for that. And yet, maybe it's more convenient to have our own. But I think if, if we would take a look at that, and we still have the equipment, and all it would do is delay the purchase of more rollouts if we continued to use dumpsters in certain sections of town. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Christensen.
I guess the question I have is, we keep talking about this congested areas and this and that. Anywhere I've seen the rollouts, pretty congested. There's cars all over town, including my area on Broadway. I do want to say that the drivers of the guys that pick up these rollouts, it's amazing how fast they work and how, I mean, there's, there's literally maybe about a foot on either side of my dumpster between the cars, my car and the neighbor's cars. And I just cringed when we went to rollouts because I thought, oh, there goes. These guys are so good. I mean, they're just boom, 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 they're down, they're down the way. They're so fast each block. I've ridden with them just to make sure that I'm correct. So I think congestion, every street in this town is congested. Broadway, those buses, and schools on, I mean, you can't get any more congested because they're just hustling up and down that street. I just want people to know that they are very good at what they do. They're fast, they're precise, and hopefully they don't ever have an accident with it. But I don't know, for me, it was a concern at first, but it is not when you see these guys operate. Very good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, certainly in my mind, the professionalism and efficiency of the equipment, I don't think is an issue for me. What concerns me is that if everyone puts their rollout in the street, they may leave it there for three or four days. And, you know, it just, it's, there's going to be the clutter effect, I think, increased across town. And I think we've got plenty of that now without that, but that's just one, one side effect. On the budget impact here, the statement is, however, one-time capital investment of approximately $75,000 to $100,000 will be required for new rollouts receptacles. The next sentence, the city has currently budgeted $80,000 for this capital investment. So if I were just reading from the outside, it would seem like that's a done deal, that that's a direction that we're going. And if I were a citizen reading that, so, and I hope that's not the conclusion, but putting it into the budget certainly does allow us that flexibility. And so there's probably needs other places for that $80,000 in that area, even though it's not for rollouts. But at any rate, that was just an aside, so. Any other comments anyone would like to make?
Your Honor, I just had one other thought.
Councilman Fabian.
In hearing Councilman Gard talk, I guess I was thinking about the budgetary side, but isn't, isn't waste a enterprise fund? So in the end, it, I mean, it has to pay its own way, or it, I mean, that's how it's required to operate. So obviously, it must be collecting enough to do what it's doing, or we would have to adjust the rates accordingly, so.
Yeah, that's correct, Your Honor. It's just a matter of how much that spread is. I think in all of our budget ones, we've shown revenues versus expenditures, they've always been above that. Some of those margins aren't very big, but we usually use those overages to cover for capital expenditures that come up.
We have a certain amount of reserve in there as well, what, 18% I think it is? So that's a good point to bring up. Any other comments?
I guess, Your Honor, the only thing I'm pointing out is that we have 500 dumpsters that now are surplus the moment that we go to rollouts. So no matter what we, you know, if we decide to go to private pickup, we end up with a lot of equipment that we're not using. We're going to end up with 500 dumpsters that are now delivered back to the city yards. And I'm pretty sure that you can sell those on the, out to the private sector again. There'll be towns that are interested in buying those. That doesn't bother me. My only thought was maybe we could minimize the, buy $40,000 of rollouts and continue to use some dumpsters instead of, instead of a full purchase of $80,000 all at once. Thank you.
Is that the plan, if it goes one way or the other, that we just, within a month, the turnover is made, the change? Or is it going to be incremental in parts of the community and kind of grow, or?
Your Honor, there will be a lead time in implementing this. Again, we do, we were given six months from July 1st. I don't think we can look at that as a full six months, you know, because there is a lead time in just simply ordering receptacles if the vote does go that way, if council chooses, which I'm not sure exactly what that lead time would be. I imagine it would at least be a month. I think to serve our citizens well, I would prefer to do a bit of public relations and education when we're getting out these receptacles and helping people, I mean, decide if they can really get by with a 45 gallon instead of a 90 gallon and save a little bit of money for themselves. Because I know making that change, when you're used to having a huge three yard dumpster in your alley, and trying to conceptualize that change is a little bit different, you know? But the nice thing is, is the force side of staff previously purchased a number of 45 gallon receptacles. We have a number of those ready to go. And so again, I think it would be wise for the city to do a little bit of public outreach and letting people see, hey, you know, I can save a few bucks, I can go to this 45, it will meet my needs. Or, you know, if I need to, I'll go with a 90 gallon. So helping people make that decision moving forward. So I don't think it's, it's a quick drop as far as, you know, council makes a vote and we'll go right away. There will be some time that will, staff will need in order to appropriately, one, get the capital investment taken care of, and two, helping the public with that transition. There will be immediately, like Councilman Gard, Your Honor, Councilman Gard mentioned, that we will have, you know, automatically in excess of capital inventory, and we will have to address how we will deal with that. Hopefully, we'll be able to put it on the market, bring in a little bit of revenue. Not sure exactly how much those would go for.
$60 a ton, probably.
At least four cents.
Yeah.
Could be the scrapyard gives us more than we can sell them, you never know.
Any other comments? You've been awfully quiet this evening, Councilman Smith. Yes, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mike Bailey. And you may have clarified it right at the end, but am I hearing that the city supplements the sanitation budget? You were talking about whether we spend 30% more or something, I mean, I guess, is the sanit, is trash pickup self-contained and covers its own budget and pays for its own dump, garbage trucks?
Yeah, I misspoke suggesting that. I think being a capital facility or a capital project, enterprise fund, why?
I guess, because to me, if it isn't, then our rates are really artificial. If we're buying the garbage trucks and that's not being reflected in the rates, I guess that's, that's a little bit of artificial. So if the private sector doing it costs more, but they're paying for their own garbage trucks and all that kind of stuff, then that's, that's a whole different game. But if it's self-sufficient within itself, I guess, then that's, that's another thing. And I guess, to me personally, a long time ago, the city and its planning and organizational methods, you know, sort of alleviated alleys in these subdivisions, so I mean, which pretty much forced us to rollouts in those areas. I live in one of them, we don't have alleys. And personally, I hate driving down the street and having dumpsters sit along the street, where they used to be in the alleys and they were sort of out of sight, out of mind, and I think the city looked a lot nicer. But I understand in those areas, you're pretty much limited to doing that only, so. And if it's true that in Lander, they do rollouts only, that's probably the more efficient way to do it, because in a commercial enterprise, if dumpsters were more efficient, they'd be doing dumpsters. And so I think, as much as it's unsavory to some of us, me included, having rollouts, I think that's probably where we're going to go. And I guess, to me, a phased-in approach probably is better than just saying, oh, everybody by December 1st is going to have rollouts or not. And so I guess my main thing was fiscally, as long as it's covering its own cost, that's the best way.
So the airport is an enterprise fund as well.
Right.
So what can I say?
My personal feelings are those things need to be self-sufficient because we shouldn't be artificially supplementing water and sewer with other tax methods. I think, you know, your water bill should reflect what it takes to run the water system. Trash should take care of what costs to run trash. It is what it is, and none of us like the cost going up, but the costs are whatever the costs are. I mean, we just need to try to be as efficient as we can and do it in the cheapest method. And he was saying that the larger new dumps, dump, garbage trucks can only have to dump once a day, and they can compact it better. Maybe that's a better spending of your money, is buying more and more efficient dump trucks, because if the, the other trucks have to go dump four times a day, and the other ones can dump one time a day, then guess what? The guy in the big truck's going to pick up a lot more trash in a day than the guy in the one that has to dump four times. So I mean, you know, maybe that's where you squeeze some savings out there, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, Mike. Okay, any other comments for the good of the order this evening? Okay, I think that concludes our agenda item. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this work session.
I'd move to adjourn.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.